For the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for August the fifth, two thousand and twenty four, we have three study items this evening on our agenda. Item number one is a Lutheran Legacy Campus draft ballot measure. Item number two is the Wheat Ridge Prosperity Plan Update. And item number three is an overview of roundabouts, effectiveness, and application. And we will start our meeting as we generally do with the public comment. And I have no one signed up to speak in the council chambers. I have one person to sign up to speak in our Zoom format. It looks like Matt Adler. If you were online, would you please unmute yourself? And we will invite you to join the meeting.
Mayor, he has not signed in yet.
He's not there. Okay, we're going to give him another ten seconds or so and see if he is able to make himself known. Matt Adler, if you'd like to unmute and speak, then you may do so now. And I don't hear him coming on, so we will move on past our public's right to speak. Go to agenda item number one. Oh, is this Matt Adler? Okay, I'm going to let you do this this time. You've got to sign in, so if you'd please come to the podium. And give it your first name and your last name and give us an address. Or actually, just tell us whether you live or work in the city of Wheat Ridge.
Well, it's Bob Razzle, and it's thirty eight thirty Carr Street, and it's in Wheat Ridge. I just had a couple of things to say about this Wheat Ridge Legacy Campus thing that we're dealing with. Because I live right on thirty, just off Thirty Eighth and Carr. And I'm seeing, you know, I went to all the meetings and all this other stuff and all this whatever. But what I'm seeing is we're using an excuse that the hospital's been so high, so we should be able to build all stuff in there in the middle. At a, you know, what are we looking at? Seven stories? Five stories? I don't remember. But the whole thing that I'm wondering about is the hospital itself is tall. But all this stuff, and the hospital only goes up to where the ditch is. Everything north of the ditch is two or three stories. It's not five or six or seven stories. And you've got a whole lot bigger area that you're trying to put medium to high density stuff in there, multi-use or whatever. And just being a neighbor there and knowing all my neighbors, you put buffer zones around everything except our neighborhood, which is right off Thirty Eighth on the south side or the north side of the hospital. And the thing that concerned us the most is that we're going to end up putting a lot of crap in there. And then you're not going to make them provide adequate parking. And you're going to ruin our neighborhood. And that's just how it is. Now, the hospital has always been a fantastic neighbor for all of us. Because the hospital, when I moved there thirty-three years ago, I found out real quick that the hospital provided adequate parking for all their employees, all their patients, and all their visitors. Because I found that out because we had a friend of ours, my wife worked at Lutheran, and she had a friend who was having a little physical problem. So he asked if he could park in front of our house. We said, sure, go ahead and park in front of our house. And he was working Lutheran, and it was closer for him to park there and walk across. Well, he parked there for a couple of days. And then the neighbor across the street came over and just started chewing on him. Why are you parking here? You work at Lutheran, they'll be parking here. I'll go over and call security. And he said, well, the neighbors, they're my friends, and they said we could park here. And I said, oh, well, okay. But the fact of the matter is Lutheran, we always had an agreement with Lutheran that any employee who parked on our street, we would go over to security and talk to them. And they would come over and find out who it was and make them quit parking on the street in front of our houses. Because they were great neighbors. And what I'm really concerned about now is because we've got all this craziness going on where we're saying, well, we don't need any parking for anything because it's right on the bus line. Well, right on the bus line doesn't mean nothing to me because RTD stands for Reason to Drive.
Okay, if you, your time is really up.
I'm done.
You're up.
Okay, so I just want you to be aware of the parking situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will go to agenda item number one. This is the Lutheran Legacy Campus, the draft ballot measure. Mr. Goff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just introduce this real quick. Then we have several other staff members here this evening to help us with this discussion. But as you all remember, the Lutheran Legacy Campus Master Plan was adopted in two thousand and twenty-one. And implementation of the plan's vision that the city's requires that the city's charter be amended to modify the building height limitations in the interior of the campus. Such amendment would require a ballot measure. We hired Magellan Strategies to obtain inputs from our community. They did a first round of polling in May and a second round between July seventeenth and July twenty-eighth. Magellan is here, Ryan Winger from Magellan is here this evening to give us those results. And then we also are here this evening to talk about the draft ballot question. Mr. Dollar Attorney and Lauren Michelak, our Community Development Director, and myself have worked on painstakingly, worked on a ballot question and fretted over every word. So we hope you like it this evening. But before we get into that, I want to turn it over to Ryan Winger. And he is here to present the results of the second round of polling of our Wheat Ridge residents. Ryan?
Thanks, Patrick, and thanks, everyone, for your time this evening. As Patrick mentioned, this is a follow-up survey to one that was conducted earlier this year. So let's get right into it. This was done from a period of July seventeenth through the twenty-eighth. And we completed just over a thousand, one thousand and sixty-one interviews during that timeframe. On the left of the screen there, you see, if you'll remember, that's kind of what the text message looks like that went out to a sample of voters within the city. And it's important to note, too, that these results are weighted to be representative of what we expect turnout to look like this November. And so just as a refresher for you, that's the red box there around two thousand and twenty. That's the last comparable election, being the last presidential election. And so you'll see that is how these results are weighted. And just jumping right into it, we didn't have any kind of icebreaker questions that we kind of already covered in the first survey. So thinking now about the Lutheran Legacy Campus located at eight three hundred West Thirty-Eighth. Do you know that on August third, which of course is in the rearview mirror now, but did you know that on August third, the hospital is moving to the Clear Creek Crossing Development at I seventy and Forty- eighth Avenue? Obviously, a lot of awareness, a lot of familiarity with that event happening, eighty-seven percent. And you do see there the thirteen percent that weren't aware of it. So hopefully, this survey made them aware, right? How familiar are you with the master plan that was approved by City Council in October of two thousand and twenty-one, which lays out a vision for the future redevelopment of that campus? And this number was at thirty-nine percent, very somewhat familiar, went up by about eleven or twelve points from the earlier survey. So clearly, some of the educational work that city staff was doing, just getting the word out about the plan and what's going on, is paying dividends here. You still see thirty-eight percent not too familiar and about a quarter, that twenty-two percent are not familiar at all, which just, you know, speaks to kind of the challenge of constantly trying to make sure that folks are aware of, yes, this master plan was passed in October two thousand and twenty-one. Here's the details of it. So even as we continue going forward, you know, the conversation is not intimately familiar to some voters. That being the case, we also asked, did you know that the city charter limits development height in most areas of the city? And this one also, it was at fifty-nine percent in the earlier survey, and it's now at seventy percent. So clearly, there's just been more discussion out in the community about, you know, height restrictions, this specific campus. More folks are familiar with just the general tenor of the conversation, clearly. And then we have just more information for them here. Before we continue, it's important that a decision, we have not made a decision about exactly what to place on the ballot or even to place something on the ballot for sure this year. But as mentioned, here's the details of the master plan, how that came about, and the description for why this is necessary, right? The site's currently zoned as a planned hospital district. And so therefore, we need to make a change to the zoning. And the city charter would need to change in order to realize the vision in the master plan. So that all being the case, we asked them to read a potential amendment, the language of which you can see in the middle of the screen right here. The city council is considering placing the following amendment on the ballot this November. And then you can just read it for yourselves. Building height limitations, the charter shall not apply to the middle of the Lutheran Legacy Campus. This is one where, you know, you wish you could put a map on the ballot. Unfortunately, you can't do that. But you can have them, that reference point there, where you saw specifically shown on page fifty-one, should not modify any current zoning, and the building height for the area shall exceed the current height of the hospital. If this was on the ballot this November, how would you vote? And for that specific ballot language, we see fifty-nine percent support, twenty-seven definitely, thirty-two probably, with thirty percent opposing, nineteen percent definitely, and eleven percent probably, with eleven percent still undecided. And, you know, I think this is a dramatic movement from the earlier polling that we had. But it's also slightly different ballot language. The ballot language that was tested before did not have that specific mention of the height of the hospital. And so it was a little bit more of a gray area as far as what we were talking about. I think that provided some context for respondents. And clearly, there's a pretty significant jump in support for this particular language. Then we just shared a couple more additional pieces of information about the Lutheran Legacy Campus and why the amendment being considered. One, just simply being that the master plan calls for a number of community and civic-focused amenities. And just the idea that it would not be financially feasible to provide these without allowing for some taller development in the interior of the property. Sixty-one percent of respondents are more likely to approve the charter amendment after reading that piece of information. Also, just in an attempt to just kind of clarify or again, just kind of reinforce this idea that the amendment would only apply to the interior of the Lutheran campus. So it would not apply to the exterior perimeter of the campus, let alone any other areas of Wheat Ridge. Fifty-five percent more likely to approve after learning that or, you know, having that reinforced. And then as well, we included an image from the master plan, just as we did in the first survey, showing just a general description of the future uses at the current Lutheran Hospital site. So the amendment would allow for taller developments in the mixed-use areas, which are on that, rendering shaded in purple in exchange for keeping lower heights and open space on the perimeter, shaded in yellow. And knowing that, fifty-three percent were more likely to approve the charter amendment. Then we wanted to shift gears a little bit and get into an area of the discussion that we did not get into in the first survey, simply the idea of different specific heights, right? So based on what you know and what you've learned, how likely are you to approve a charter amendment allowing for the following heights in the interior of the Lutheran Legacy Campus? And basically, the way this worked is when they took the survey, they had on the same page seventy feet or five stories, eighty feet or six stories, ninety feet or seven stories. And they're asked to evaluate how they, whether they would approve each of those different heights. And so here, we'll start with seventy feet or five stories, sixty percent approved. So you see, that's very comparable to the support we saw for the specific ballot language. Thirty-four percent would definitely vote yes, twenty-six percent would probably vote yes. A quarter there would vote no, and fourteen percent are undecided. Moving on to eighty feet or six stories, you see a pretty significant drop there, to forty-seven percent. So we're now below fifty percent. Forty-three percent would oppose it or vote no, ten percent are undecided. So clearly, and I'll just flashback here, so as we can see, sixty down to forty-seven. So a significant drop there when you go from seventy to eighty feet. Moving on to ninety feet, the drop isn't as significant, but it does drop even further to forty-two percent. So now we're talking about nearly a majority, a very close to majority, who would oppose development of ninety feet or seven stories. And you see there, nine percent still are undecided. And with that, we have the survey demographics. Again, where possible, these are weighted to reflect what we expect turnout to look like in November on things like party affiliation, age, gender. There you see race and ethnicity, tenure in Wheat Ridge. And we've got a pretty good spread of newer residents versus those who have lived for a longer period of time. And also a pretty good spread as far as the income ranges among respondents. And with that, I will take any questions that you all have.
Thank you. Questions from council? Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. I think this is more of a question for staff in regards to how many units would the five stories be? Do you have an estimate?
Sure, we, the charter limits development to twenty-one units per acre across the whole city, including this campus. We have not, we're not proposing to change that. So the rough numbers we were giving during the master plan is if it's a hundred acres, a hundred times twenty-one is twenty-one hundred units. The area that is proposed for sale is not a hundred acres, so it'd be less than that. We haven't tried to convert what is the potential height in density because we just don't know enough about potential development scenarios. Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought this was very interesting, particularly on the demographics, where it appeared that people that are younger and people that have lived in Wheat Ridge for a shorter period of time generally were more favorable of the heights, even though it stepped down from higher to lower. I guess my question, well, that's an observation I think that I really would have liked to point out here. And the other is, the, oh, and the demographics, we've, it does seem to not skew one way or the other except for the income levels. And I guess I'd ask that from Joan. There is an awful lot of people making awful lot of money. And it seemed quite a bit higher than the, what the census shows for average income in Wheat Ridge. Is that an anomaly or?
Yeah, so on things like income level, unfortunately, we don't, we don't have a way of knowing exactly what's appropriate for each of these different income ranges the way we do for things like gender, age, and party affiliation. So typically, what we do is when we wait on these kind of things, it does make income kind of fall a little bit more in line. But you're absolutely right. I mean, I think there is something to the fact that, you know, those with higher incomes are simply more likely to participate in service, just in general, than those with lower incomes. And so that twenty-four percent, yeah, that is on the high end. I'm not exactly sure what that number should be. And so that's where we just kind of have to be careful. If we don't know what a number should be, we just have to kind of wait on the other things and hope that it kind of balances out, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And just to follow up there real quickly, we're able to chart the demographics and the political leanings and the other things that sort of bunch people up into how they feel about this. And we saw that as the specific height mentioned goes up, the support comes down. Is there a way or would there be a way, other than maybe doing some focus groups, to determine what it is about taller buildings that people don't like?
Sure. No, yeah, that would be something that you would more need, like a qualitative focus group, like you said. You know, what's interesting is, you know, I do think asking these all next to each other, you know, if we would have said sixty feet, it would have been the most popular. If we would have said fifty, it would have been the most popular, right? So, you know, in terms of placing something on the ballot, they're not going to have options. It's not really a pick and choose kind of thing. But clearly, there's just, there's a general sense of, okay, tell us what you need, but don't build it higher than what you need. I think it's kind of the message, even though, I mean, it's not, it's not so overwhelming. I mean, you still have forty-two percent who would support ninety or seven stories. And so it, it's definitely, you get into more split opinion territory on these two taller options. Whereas here, there really is a clear preference for seventy feet. You're getting a lot of people to buy in at seventy feet that aren't buying in. But as far as why exactly that's the case and what's the thinking in their minds, the difference between seventy or eighty feet? I think we'd have to kind of ask for like an in-depth interview and try to get a sense of why.
Okay. Mayor Protim Stites.
I think I asked you this question with two J last year, but at fifty-nine percent or whatever the percentage is here, would you be comfortable moving forward?
So in any pre-election polling, we're really like sixty is kind of the target, just assuming that there's going to be factors beyond your control, whether it's a very crowded ballot or other things on the ballot. I would say that that holds kind of more true when you're talking about a ballot measure that involves a tax increase. So this, we're in a little bit of a different territory because we're not talking about something that's going to increase taxes on voters. But at the same time, I think it generally still holds. Like, we're right kind of at that threshold where you'd want to be. And, you know, when you're a little bit lower, when you're significantly lower than sixty percent, you just kind of have to ask yourself, okay, do we anticipate, you know, a no campaign? People making arguments against this? How do we kind of figure out, okay, what kind of arguments are we going to use? What's that going to look like at the city for advocating for this charter amendment? It's, you know, I rarely call anything a slam dunk. It's certainly not bad, but it's a pretty encouraging place to be at this point in the cycle.
I guess it's encouraging, too, that the education popped those numbers up so quickly. So maybe more education would continue to.
Sure, yeah. And, you know, it's, it remains to be seen, too, now that we're on the other side of the move. How does that affect public opinion, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Counselor Holtein.
Thank you. So, yeah, to Mayor Protim Stites's question around threshold test, I think, when, you know, I was the one, when this came up last time, that was just really not feeling confident that where we were polling was indicating that we had any true line of success. And so I think, you know, being able to see the correlation between doing the engagement and outreach and the benefits and understanding how it's perceived across our city. I mean, this gives me a lot more comfort than I was feeling when you were in here last time. So this definitely, these numbers are in alignment with what looks like, you know, an option to get this on the ballot and get it passed. And I say that just in recognition that, you know, this is to build out the Lutheran Legacy Campus in alignment with what our community told us that they wanted, and they prioritized in the plan. So I'm feeling comfortable and confident and really appreciate being able to do the second round of polling. And I really appreciate staff's concerted effort. I mean, the list of things that happened since you were in the room last time did not happen without like a lot of effort and coordination amongst our staff. So I really appreciate that commitment to it. So I don't have any questions, just glad to see the correlation between effort and outcome.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. I agree. And I do see that we're going to have booths at the Carnation Festival this weekend. And then on September seventeenth, let's talk open house. And it looks like we're going to continue to have educational pieces within our correspondence to the public. Are there going to be more concerted efforts in October and November leading up to the ballot because of that education correlation piece?
Yeah, once city council, if you decide to move forward, once city council sets the ballot language, staff cannot do anything to campaign for this, against or for. So at that point, a citizen group would need to, or you, you all, you have the ability, as council members, to go tell people to vote for this or not against it or against it. So, but again, if you decide to move forward, we have the set, I believe, for September twenty-six, I think, is the second reading. So after that point, we'd have to stop any staff contributions to any type of campaign.
Additional discussion? Counselor Larson.
Just one other thing here, and this is for staff. In the memo this week, you, talking to the people at Intermountain Health, they reported that there were some potential buyers that would come in and look at the, at the property there. And Intermountain Health quoted them as saying they do not envision development of a new structure taller than five stories. So if that's the case, and if that's what maybe the market is telling us, that they're interested in buildings taller than five stories, is it necessary to go through all this?
Yes, because five stories is not allowed for residential on the property currently under our city charter. So to allow five stories, you do have to go to the ballot, ask voters to change it.
Okay, but that is the direction, or at least the impression you're getting, is that five stories would be about the limit.
Yeah, and that was very important to Lauren and I. And we met probably with twenty different developers who are interested in the site. And so is CBRE, who is, did RFP. And we conferred with them also. And as the memo says, they were able to confirm that within their interviews that everybody said, yes, five stories would be adequate. And we do not want to ask for more than we need because we don't think the community would support that. So that's why we, that's why we added these specific questions to the survey. That's why we got the information from potential developers. And from everything we've heard, five stories, seventy feet is enough.
Further discussion or questions from council? Counselor Poppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in our packet was the proposed ballot question. And so I'm wondering, like, thank you for your work on the survey. So just like moving forward, tonight, we're looking for a consensus to approve this language, and then we'll start marching it down the road until the end of September.
Yeah, first consensus we're looking for is, should we put a ballot question on? And if that's yes, we've drafted a question here for you, and we'd like some discussion about that. And then if you want to move forward, we'd love to hear, have a consensus to use this ballot question or amend it slightly. As I mentioned earlier, we did spend a lot of time and had a lot of people look at it. And it's kind of interesting. You can debate over one word for a long time on what it means and the significance of a word. And we did do that. So I do encourage you not to wordsmith too much unless there's something that, you really have something that's in your craw. But we did go through almost every word in this question. And we think this is the right question to put. put on the ballot.
Thank you.
And this would be question H, I think, on page three?
No.
Be the, the amendment to the city charter language.
Oh, okay.
The question would be on page four of your staff memo.
Okay. So page four of the staff.
It's, it's in bold.
And, and in regard to that question, as I'm reading it, I, I appreciate that the, I like, I like it the way it's written. I appreciate that not only does it use feet, but also measurements, not only in feet, but also in stories. And because that gives people more of an opportunity to, to really understand what does 30 feet actually look like, what does 70 feet actually look like.
Any other discussion? Counselor Hulteen?
So I know that there was a request not to wordsmith on this.
No, we want the discussion.
No, no, I am more than happy to honor that request. I think this is great ballot language. And I just want to point out that not only we are talking about the, the allowing of the five stories, we're also holding ourselves to the standard that we've set for the perimeter. So we're, we're acknowledging both of the commitments that we're making in terms of the, the height on the property. So I just want to call out publicly that we're not talking just about ballot language to allow the five stories. We're saying we're going to limit the, the height around the perimeters, like we said. So I have not a single word that I want to touch. I agree with Councilmember Hoppy.
Mayor Protem Stites, is there something else?
Uh, no, I just want to point out that I like the wording on this. This is, we can't have a picture on the ballot, so this is nice and simple. And this, this does spell it out very nicely. And it makes, I, I've spoken to a few people in District Three, and, and we've had some comments tonight with some questions about, like, why we're basing the height of the hospital. We're not basing the height off the hospital. We're just giving a basis of comparison to what's already there. I just want to make sure that Lauren's nodding yes. I just want to make sure that the public understands that we're not basing this off of that. This is based on codes that are already in existence, right? And this is.
Yes, that's correct. So this, the draft ballot question definitely represents an evolution from the question people saw on the poll, which did include reference to the hospital. And I think once we realized there was not a need to get even remotely that tall, it became less necessary to use that as a point of reference in the ballot question itself. So you're correct.
Thank you. And thank you for all of your hard work on this. This is great. Any, uh, Counselor Weaver? Okay. Do we then have, I don't see any other discussion. Do we have consensus to move this forward to the ballot? Okay. Thank you very much. You have your.
Thank you.
Orders on item number one?
Very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number Two. This is the Wheat Ridge Prosperity Plan update. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are happy to provide you an update this evening on one of our planning efforts this evening. Steve Art's been managing that, and I will let him introduce our guest who are here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goff, and members of the City Council. As you know, in the direction that you provided to the city manager, your annual treat was to form a new economic strategy for the city. The last one was done in 2009, so 15 years is much too long to wait to redo a plan. Earlier this year, we contracted with PUMA, which stands for Progressive Urban Management Associates, to perform the economic development strategy. We kicked off in late February, early March, having our first meeting. In that time, they'd been going around the community, and they'll point this out in their, in their presentation that they have. But they've talked to you council members, they've talked to focus groups consisting of businesses, citizens, interested parties in this. Over 300 people were spoken to in this. They've come up with four major goals that seem to be rising to the top, and they will outline those tonight. Originally, it was called a Wheat Ridge Economic Development Strategy, but economic development means something different to everyone. In fact, it's a great way to kill, kill a conversation by telling them you're going to talk about economic development. So through time, we've come up that we are just going to call this the Wheat Ridge Prosperity Plan, because it not only deals with business, but it also focuses on what's happening with the members of our community. So I want to invite forward tonight from Progressive Urban Management Associates, its principal Brad Siegel and Andrea Bouglion, who has been doing the, the vast majority of the work on the plan. And I believe, Margie, we do have online Arlene Tanawaki, is she available? And Arlene Tanawaki from Arlene, Arlen Land Use Economics, who is doing all the, the financial, the numbers part of this. Brad, it's all you. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thanks for having us here. It's nice to see you all. We, we talked with most of you on a screen, so it's great to actually see you in 3D and for you to create time for this presentation this evening. I'm Brad Siegel. I am joined by Andrea Bouglion. And as Steve mentioned, we do have a third member of our team on, she's out of state, but she's available for questions. We do want to run you through about a 12 to 15 minute overview of the process that we've completed, and then the proposed goals for economic prosperity in Wheat Ridge. So in terms of what we're going to cover, we're going to recap again what we've completed in terms of process, key takeaways, what it all means. This goals framework, the framework on the goals would, would govern how this function, the economic prosperity function, is undertaken within the city. It also relies on close coordination with other departments. So we didn't look at this in, in just under the one area of economic development within the city, but we looked at how economic development also works with its partners within the city. We've also been doing this, this work in tandem with the city plan folks. So the city plan consultants we've talked to, and Andrea will tell you, we've learned a lot at the city plan events in order to piggyback on outreach and not to fatigue your community on, on too many processes and surveys. I do want to point out that Steve and Patrick, others at the city, have connected us to an advisory team of private sector folks and city representatives who have volunteered their time to come to a set of meetings and give us input as we've developed this. So this is our reality check, if you will. We've talked to many, many folks that you'll learn here in a moment. But our advisory team has been really helpful just to keep us on track and to make sure that this plan relates to and fits Wheat Ridge moving forward. So with that, I'm going to hand it to Andrea, and she will walk you through where we've been.
Sure. All right. So Steve mentioned this. To date, we've talked to about 300 folks. We've had roundtables that were topic-based with businesses, the developers, and commercial real estate, community residents. We had interviews with the Business Association, the Chamber, Local Works, the Regional Economic Development Corporation. And then, as Brad mentioned, we did some deep dives into the different city departments, interviews with community development, the URA, the Urban Renewal Authority, and then, of course, with you all. And we attended both of the open houses that have occurred to date for the city plan. We also created and widely distributed an online survey. We didn't end up getting as many responses as we typically do in a process like this. And our hunch is just that the community is a bit oversaturated with plans and surveys right now. So, but we did ask one of the online survey questions in person at the city plan event. I don't know if any of you attended, but we had a little voting exercise. And basically, the question was, as Wheat Ridge evolves over the next five to 10 years, which of the 10, there are 10 options, which is most important for business prosperity? And the top two answers combined from the online survey and from this in-person exercise, the first was improving the variety of retail and restaurants, so unique locally owned businesses. And the second highest rate was create distinctive, walkable, commercial retail districts, including 38th, 44th, and 29th. We did fairly comprehensive market research and analysis, just to highlight some of the areas we looked into. We, of course, we visited a lot of the corridors and nodes, the urban renewal projects. We compiled demographic and employment data, looked at regional market trends, looked at all the city records, sales tax, building permits. We looked at vacant developable land. We also looked at, to compare real estate trends with a handful of peer communities, Arvada, Golden, Lakewood, and then Jefferson County as a whole. And then, of course, our interviews with business owners and entrepreneurs informed this market research as well. So just some highlights. Of course, the actual plan will have a very thorough appendix with all this stuff. But basically, this map here just illustrates, well, the main takeaway here is, all the colors represent different sectors. So office, retail, multifamily, industrial in the purple. The main takeaway here is just where everything is clustered. It's, it's really a city of corridors, as you can see here. Just some highlights from the market data. Commercial, there's fairly low vacancy, and this is true of retail as well as industrial, particularly industrial, and that's true for all of Jefferson County. The largest sector in terms of employment was healthcare. And then that was followed by professional, scientific, and technical jobs where the fastest growing. Let's see. So sales taxes, as you can see, the city's in fairly good standing in terms of sales tax revenue, looking back from 2018 to 2023. Can I get some water? My throat is like, I'm so sorry. I think it's all the wildfire smoke. So the next three maps are looking at this tax, sales tax revenue by generalized tax zone. So this is 2018, and you can see the red and orange, they're higher generating areas, okay? So along I-70, along Wad's, and Kipling, and Sheridan. This is 2023. So you can see how things have shifted a little bit. There's a little bit more activity along Wadsworth and, and 38th. This map shows the relative change. So again, the red and orange represent larger changes from 2018 to 2023. Thank you, Steve. All right. So before I hand it over to Brad to get into some details around the, the goals framework.
I wasn't the only one.
We wanted to share what we think are some big takeaways from our outreach and our market research to date. So the first thing is that Wheat Ridge's competitive advantages, location, quality of life, historic character amenities, they underpin a strong market outlook. We think there are really strong foundations here. And that's evidence from what we heard from folks in the community, as well as from what the market data is telling us. Businesses want to be here, residents want to be here. Another takeaway is that the city's demographics are kind of shifting slowly, which we think will bring new opportunities to spur business growth and investments in amenities. We are seeing a slight increase in total population, as well as incomes, education, things like that. And particularly, as families are being priced out of other markets locally. We, the community's seen a surge of younger residents, which we think puts to test this reputation of Wheat Ridge as an aging bedroom community. Again, we touched on this earlier, but Wheat Ridge really is a city of corridors. This is where a lot of the commercial activity is happening, and it's really the driving force behind the city's revenue. So we think these historic corridors and nodes should be preserved and invested in, in retaining this, the small, the character of the single family residential neighborhoods.
Sorry, we're just having difficulty with the public on Zoom.
Oh, okay.
Can I see something real quick?
Yeah.
I think it may have gotten muted somewhere here. We're trying to figure out. Yes. There you go.
All right.
Let's see, where's your presentation now? There we go.
All right, great. Hopefully, you can all hear us now in Zoom land. So the fourth takeaway is that Wheat Ridge is really, it's built out, and it's landlocked. There's not a whole lot of room to grow. There aren't a lot of large parcels certainly left to accommodate manufacturing uses. But we think there are opportunities for smaller scale infill, particularly when it comes to industrial. And then finally, this is something we heard loud and clear. Wheat Ridge has a ton of great organizations and resources available for the business community. It's, from a business owner perspective, it's, it can be a little bit confusing in terms of which organization does what and who they should belong to. So we think there's a really important opportunity to create stronger partnerships and more well-defined roles among all these different players in the economic development ecosystem. And we'll get into that a little bit more.
Thanks, Andrea. So I'm going to close the presentation going through the proposed goals framework for this plan. We see four goals for economic prosperity for Wheat Ridge moving forward. And I'll spend a little time on each one. The way the goals sort out, the first one is that corridors, nodes, and redevelopment opportunities. So it really is sort of a geographic approach to how we look at economic prosperity. Secondly, jobs, innovation, and light manufacturing, focusing on the I-70 corridor and the importance of the types of jobs that are created along that corridor. The third area, attainable and attainability and quality of life, really dovetails with other plans and how do other plans that the city has undertaken in the last several years and with city plan, how do they dovetail with this topic of economic prosperity? And then lastly, what Andrea was just talking about, can we simplify the, the business support ecosystem, particularly as it relates to small businesses that are either trying to start or land in, in Wheat Ridge? So each of these goals is supported by a set of objectives. The, the objectives has a set of tactics, so there's a fair amount of detail here. Don't worry, tonight, we won't get into too high level of detail. But the, the plan itself is intended to be tactical and not just talk about high-level goals. So number one, corridor nodes, redevelopment opportunities. Something fascinating to us that really distinguishes the corridors is a real difference between the east-west versus north-south corridors in Wheat Ridge. And we really, really feel in general, the east-west corridors are those neighborhood-serving corridors that we can be strategic about how do we create the type of environment that folks like, notably along 29th and 38th? And are there opportunities to do that along certain parts of 44th? Meanwhile, the north-south corridors are more regional-serving, and they give you a large array of retail opportunities. And at the end of the day, part of the reality is we got to generate sales tax here if we're going to deliver services that the residents of Wheat Ridge, they expect. So on these north-south corridors, the Sheridans, the Wadsworths, the Kiplings, opportunities for some of the chains and franchises and other types of businesses that maybe are not desired in the neighborhood level, but could be critical for driving sales tax. And honestly, it's where a lot of people shop and where a lot of people eat. But again, an east-west versus north-south distinction, and we've been talking about that with city plan folks, because they're, they're also in agreement with this, and they're intrigued in terms of weaving that into that greater vision for the community. So a mix with, again, an emphasis on the local serving, the neighborhood-type businesses on those east-west corridors. So that corridor nodes and redevelopment opportunities, that general goal reinforced by several objectives. So maintaining, enhancing small business mix along corridors, particularly east-west, attention to 38th, 29th, and 44th. 44th, we see is a real corridor of opportunity, particularly over the next 10, 15 years. And we think there's several small areas, nodes, if you will, along 44th, including some areas to the east of Wadsworth, that in the future, we should be really thinking about corners or areas where we could have neighborhood-serving businesses, much like what has evolved along 38th over the last 10, 15, 20 years. Lutheran Campus today, talking about that, and particularly the existing buildings. We think the existing buildings could house some medical-related businesses that will still want to be close to the new campus, but the existing buildings at the old campus might suit them. might suit them. So medical research, services, even biotech is a potential opportunity in terms of innovating at the old campus moving forward, knowing that those types of opportunities will not be dominant there, but we do think they could be accommodated, and again, in some of the existing buildings. And then there are opportunity sites that will be identified in the plan that, there are not a lot, again, we're landlocked here in Wheat Ridge, but there are still some specific sites where there are development opportunities, the I-70, Kipling interchange being one example of that. And there are some selected parcels of land, there are multiple acres, that could potentially house mixed-use type development that includes some sort of commercial component to it. So as I mentioned earlier, each of these objectives have this whole set of strategies, and on these slides, we're just trying to give you a taste of a strategy, but I think we've got about 40 altogether. We got a lot, we got a lot of strategies, no lack of things to do. This second goal area, we think is actually important for Wheat Ridge, just to remind us of the importance of that I-70 corridor and some of the light manufacturing, light industrial uses. There is a lot of fascinating businesses there, and there is really cool innovative things happening in these somewhat non-scripted buildings. And they create primary jobs, they create innovation, they also create jobs that folks don't have to drive across the metro area for. These are close to folks who live in Wheat Ridge. So just reinforcing, there's value there, and let's try to nurture this and not necessarily... A lot of communities along the Front Range have replaced these types of areas with housing or with, you know, the mixed-use type development that's so popular in Denver metro. In this case, access to the freeway, there's just real value in really rethinking, do we want to go down that road, or do we support these existing businesses that are really helpful to the community? So preserving existing industrial areas, expanding that light industrial space, that flex space, where all sorts of business types can create and innovate. And it's also an opportunity to create small niche service-based firms. With the shift in demographics in Wheat Ridge, there's a fair amount of entrepreneurial energy moving into this town, so can we also be thinking about that, where folks can incubate a variety of business concepts moving forward? The third goal area, attainability, quality of life, this is where we look at how, what do we highlight in some of these other plans? Not necessarily reinvent the wheel here, but what do we highlight in our housing plan? What do we highlight in City Plan? What do we highlight in other things that actually could help business prosperity? So continuing sort of a place-based enhancement of our different commercial areas, thinking about jobs and affordability, and how important affordability and housing is to the job base of where we are. And that more households to support the vision of some of the businesses, particularly if we're going to support small independent retail, we need folks living here that are going to support the small independent retail. So just keeping that in mind, and it doesn't really necessarily tread new ground, but it does highlight policies from plans that I believe this body's looked at over the last several years, and again, is also looking at with City Plan and other plans that are on their way. So objectives here, enhancing access to these business districts, public garden gateways, and just giving these different commercial areas a real sense of place and distinction, housing sustainability drawing upon other plans largely. So lastly, and I think the last couple of slides we have for you tonight, this whole notion of business support ecosystem, and what that means is the different organizations that support economic prosperity, and certainly the cities at the center of this and the economic development function at the city, which we may have to call you the prosperity function if we're going to change these names, yeah, Steve likes that. But the economic development slash prosperity function, certainly the city has a role in this, but in a city of 35,000 people, we need to be real about what we can do as a city. So we need partners. Partners are really important. As Andrea mentioned, we do think on the partner side that we're a little fragmented in Wheat Ridge. There's a lot of organizations doing some similar things. So we do suggest in here some pairing of different organizations that in the past have been, how do we say, not real cozy to the idea, but we do think there needs to be some pairing of some organizational functions. So the Business Association, the Chamber, we think there's an opportunity for those folks, maybe to work more cohesively together. Local Works and the Wheat Ridge Business District are community development-type entities that, again, do we need a multiple number of groups, or can we coalesce them moving forward? So we make some recommendations there. Also, in talking to Urban Renewal, in talking to the Urban Renewal Board, the notion of creating some core values and some pretty broad guardrails in terms of making sure we're investing in different projects that really are in sync with this plan and the other plans within the city. So on the business support ecosystem, we talk about refinements to the Wheat Ridge Economic Development Function, also thinking ahead of creating a structure so that whoever's doing this 10 years from now will have a structure or a framework that they can fit right into. We talked to planning about streamlining permitting processes, that's very high in their agenda, and you've got some new software that's being employed that should make a dramatic difference. We were actually told that the Planning Division was really concerned, that maybe we're taking six to nine months in some cases. Coming from a Denver perspective, you know, that is super fast. So the fact that they want to improve that at this point was really, really promising. I mentioned Urban Renewal, creating a little bit more of a framework there, and strengthening, streamlining these business partnerships, so it's not so fragmented to the small business that wants to start and thrive in Wheat Ridge. So I don't know where we are on time, but certainly that's an overview of where we are. Let me also mention before I end just where we are in terms of process. So we're sort of rounding third and heading home. So we're putting together a formal plan for all of this and recommendations. Delivery of that is within the next four to six weeks, but certainly from council, from staff, if there's anything that we can dig into further, if there's anything that creates discomfort, or if there's anything you really like, we'd love to hear about it so that we can incorporate those ideas before this thing is delivered.
Thank you very much. Questions? Councilor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brad, thank you for being here. It's interesting, a thought that came in my mind when you were doing your presentation is, you know, you're talking about the directional northeast, southwest, and so then I kind of drew a little map, and I'm like, all right, north, what do we have in our community that's in the north? And then I started thinking, I'm like, oh, but that's really north-north. There's north, and then there's like, on the other side of I-70 is like, north-north, right? And so I kind of, I feel like, and west is also the same, same thing, right? There's, you get up to Youngfield, people think west, you get to Youngfield, but then right across Youngfield, it's west-west, right? And these are new areas that are being developed in our community and haven't really been a part of our habits necessarily. Clear Creek Crossing's not completely built out yet. You know, we're working on the TOD site and the small outdoor manufacturers that are coming into that space. And so my question is, in the plan, as you guys are rounding third base, knowing that Wheat Ridge is a place of places, and that those north-north and west-west are not necessarily their places just yet, they're getting there, do you have, are you identifying some things very specifically for those areas to, some tactics to kind of bring in more life into those areas so that they become more like north and west, like more integrated into our community?
Yeah, I'll start at that. I mean, if I followed all that properly, I think the answer is yes in the terms of opportunity sites. So we do view some of these less developed areas as opportunity sites for the city. I do think, to your point, this north, south, east, west framework is pretty interesting in thinking through the nuance that you're throwing at this, which I think is appropriate, but it's nuanced. It's just not a straight, oh, we're going to do all this on north-south corridors. So the, my first response is yes, I think we're looking at that in the sense of opportunity sites, or looking at some of the less developed areas, but it does get my head sort of working in a positive way, that we need to do some more thinking about not overgeneralizing on, you know, just north-south corridors versus east-west. I think that's, is that the, yeah, primary point there.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for this. It was, I certainly enjoyed our conversation we had as you were talking to all 300, I don't even think I know 300 people in the city, I'm impressed. So a couple of comments and then a question. One is, I just want to say, one of the things I like in here is, you know, thinking about how can Urban Renewal, you know, have some guidelines around priorities? And that came up two weeks ago in another conversation around how are we aligning our investment with strategic priorities in the city in a way that like really leverages these visions? And since we're talking about the east-west and north-south, you know, the north-south corridors are not really our corridors, we happen to have them, and we can leverage them to some extent, and they, you know, so they create opportunities and they create barriers, but they are also harder assets for us. But, you know, the land along them is certainly stuff that we can control, but the east-west corridors, I mean, as was noted, those are literally our streets, and those are our communities. And, you know, I went back and kind of looked at high level at a couple of like the let's talk things, and just, you know, across the city, we just really heard again and again as people want to be able to, you know, get to small businesses, you know, down the street from them, and that's, so, you know, those east-west corridors are those assets for us to do. So I like in what I'm seeing here that you're attaching, you know, how are we actually, you know, fulfilling that vision of, you know, at the end of my street, like there are businesses that I can go to that are likely to be locally owned? Then the question I have, though, sort of like a forest, you know, this is a little bit more on the trees, and in a, one of the things I really appreciate, having done some master planning stuff in the city, mostly as a citizen advocate, is, you know, Wheat Ridge is quirky, like we say, we're a city of places, but we're, you know, we've got a lot of unique assets, so I deeply appreciate that this is an asset-based, opportunity-oriented plan, like, you know, what do we have and how do we make the most of it? But I'm also really curious, like, how do we package that to be regionally competitive, to ensure that we, you know, not just that we know it, but that everybody knows that we have all these places and niches and that we're doing that? So I see the granularity in that, but I don't really see like, how are we positioning ourselves either through like a big, you know, big marketing, or like, how do we really package ourselves as this city of opportunity? So that whether you're like, you orient north-south, or you orient east-west in your business, you know, orientation, that you really like understand that Wheat Ridge is a place to like find that opportunity? So I'm hoping that, and it kind of shows up a little bit in consolidating some of our, you know, various business organizations, but I think we really like have to position ourselves regionally so that we're competing. And some of that may be asset preservation around those light industrial areas that our neighboring cities aren't preserving, and how are we really leveraging those as part of like our community identity and integrating those? So that's not exactly a question, but it's something that I think is really important since this is such a granular asset-based opportunity plan. We still need to position ourselves regionally to be competitive. So I know that we do a good job of that, but I didn't see that jump out in here, it's kind of in the details, but it's not like, like jumping at me, so.
Sure. There's a lot to unpack there. Let me, let me give you a quick response, and Andrea, jump in here. I think one thing that we realize, and this is, this might strike you as odd, because I'm a native of Denver, I've been here my whole life, and it didn't strike me until this project what a locational advantage Wheat Ridge has, just in the metro area. And we talked to a lot of people, particularly on the business side, and even some of the development folks we talked to, about the striking regional locational advantage that Wheat Ridge has, being on the northwest side of the metro area, your adjacency to I-70, your access to the mountains, and then not only your own neighborhood-based corridors, but the amenities in some of the neighboring communities, which maybe could even be part of the marketing package for Wheat Ridge. So Old Town, Arvada, Golden, I mean, these, even downtown Denver and having a train that goes there, were all things that we brought up, and as a native Denbri, I had never really considered too much. Another comment, and then a caution. The additional comment is, I do think these neighborhood-based corridors, there's something there in terms of the DNA, not only the DNA of the community, but the attractiveness and the quality of life that's going to attract not only people to live here, but also to locate a business here. My caution is, I would be a little careful about over-promoting all of that, because there's some natural synergy, natural momentum, and all these advantages taken together. And I think you've seen this over the last 10 years, there's sort of a natural gravity coming to this area. So I think, I think the natural locational advantage, the DNA of these corridors, and what they continue to evolve into are really the key advantages. And then some caution that we promote that in a very strategic way and targeted way, so that we're attracting the types of businesses, not only to complement the community, but also complement the opportunities that we can realistically provide. There are limitations, you are landlocked, and so there are some limitations in that. So I apologize, I was kind of rambling in response.
Yeah, no, I think our strategy and tactics kind of get into that a little bit in terms of marketing and promoting the community, so there'll definitely be a lot more detail there. Also, maybe that's something we explore some case studies from peer communities to see how they do it in a balanced way, we can look into that.
I appreciate the calling out on the balance, because we don't want to over-prescribe ourselves, but to Councilmember Hoppe's point, I mean, there's, because our economic development, we're not using that, because our prosperity is so kind of dispersed, and we, through City Plan, are recognizing the need to make the connections between those, I'm just acknowledging that, like, I think we need a little bit of an economic identity that isn't necessarily like a heavy-handed marketing campaign, but I think we need, I loved, I just wrote down, striking regional advantage, like your comments that you said there, like, that's what I want everyone to write, I mean, that's why I love living here, because I'm like, I'm close to everything, and most of it's in Wheat Ridge, but when I need to get somewhere else, it's close by too. And so I think, I think that's the kind of thing that like, that's who we are, and once you're in here, there's a niche for you. So anyway, so thank you, excited to see this moving forward, and we have a lot of 15-year horizon conversations tonight, but this is when I think that we can be activating pretty quickly, so thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Stites.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and I agree with both Councilor Hoppe and Councilor Hulteen, and your recommendations that are in here, I see where you guys are going with everything, and I agree with where you're going with everything. I guess we've had some, my question is, we've had some really good plans over the years in the city, and what tends to get in the way is people, typically, right? You know, just in general, right? I mean, and so, and I see that mostly in the fourth one here, right? The economic, you know, the business support ecosystem, and are, do you have some strategies to work around, and you've probably seen in other cities, this is probably not just a one-off case where, you know, some of these groups don't get along very well, some of these, there's some friction at the top, is there some strategies to get through that?
Well, a couple of things. One, in terms from the city perspective, what a, the other thing you're blessed with is this wonderful size of city. I mean, you're 35,000 people, and City Hall's not a vast, you know, chamber of silos, it's, folks are down the hall from each other, so they communicate with each other. And that applies clearly to economic development, there's strong communication internally. So I think our recommendations certainly, as it relates to this building, are pretty tangible and things you can do. Regarding some of these partnerships that we think are redundant, honestly, carrots, so are there, and carrots meaning are there some incentives to get them to work together? So... So for example, the Chamber and Business Association, there's been talk for many, many years about can they find ways to work better together? And maybe the city can be helpful to create some sort of incentive. So if you work together, we can help you, maybe help finance some staff support or something like that. But the caveat is, you gotta work together and figure out a way to streamline this so that folks aren't confused and there isn't redundancy in them. Local Works, you are blessed with Local Works. That's a fantastic organization, super impressed. It's essentially a state-of-the-art community development organization. But then we scratch our heads on the Wheat Ridge Business District, honestly. It seems to be something that probably was well-intentioned. It made sense when it was formed, but sometimes, you know, time changes and we have to change our systems and how we do things. So is there a way to get, maybe consolidate those functions? Because there's some duplication there. So we're calling these things out. We know some of them relate to, not just function, but relate to personalities. But at the end of the day, what we're trying to think of is how does the small business person who's trying to get started or trying to grow navigate in Wheat Ridge? And I would argue you're too small a town to have these, all these variety of different entities, albeit well-intentioned. It just can be really confusing.
Thank you. Thank you. For shoe fits, Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for this information. Couple of thoughts on this. I appreciate very much the discussion we just had around our plethora of organizations that are involved in supporting business. And I'm all for us working together to try to figure out ways for those groups to work together more. I've done, as a small business owner myself, I've done work with both organizations, the Chamber and WRBA. And there are definite benefits to both. And there's folks that are, you know, leading with their heart in both of those. And so I think there's a lot of good there. I do want to mention, and this may be more for some of those organizations that we have that support business. I think that it's worth mentioning that in order for Wheat Ridge to truly be supportive of all new business ventures and folks who want to come to Wheat Ridge and open a business, we should mention, I would like to see some sort of a support for minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, veteran-owned businesses. And yes, those businesses can operate within any framework, but I think, you know, a lot of times for other societal reasons, folks kind of fall through the cracks occasionally. And so just to have a little extra support for those businesses, I think that's part of this discussion, but also I would definitely bring that to those organizations as well. I'm not putting that on anyone, but I just think it should be part of this language, so. But thank you so much for all this.
Thank you. Councilor Larson, did I see your hand up?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And this has been a fascinating read. There's so much in here, more than obviously we can cover in one night. The, I've got a couple of things here, but the first specific, if you go to your map, the Key Market Data Map number three. And it's on, looks like page 53 in our packet. There you go. Okay, yeah, no, that was it, thank you. If, that and the two previous pages, the first one is 2018 tax revenue by generalized tax on 2023. And then the last one's percent change in tax revenue. The one that jumps out to me is in District Four and it's the area north of I-70, where we've got some car dealerships and the few industrial, really heavy industrial facilities that are in the city. And it shows, according to the table there, it shows that the tax revenue declined by 24%. How could you, can you characterize that for us?
Arlene, our voice out in Zoom land, did you follow the councilman's question there?
I did, and so I wanted to know, we can certainly look at this more carefully, but I wanted to know that this is sales tax revenues? So there's all other, there's a variety of other revenues that the city receives from, you know, primarily industrial areas. They tend not to be sales tax revenues. And so this may just be, you know, one of those situations where either a business that was generating closed or there was some other sort of anomalous situation. But we can certainly look into that.
Is it fair to say in the industrial area, there's less sales tax than in these corridors?
Right, I mean, we're really looking at the corridors to generate that sales tax. It's really the retail sales that we were trying to capture versus the other kinds of taxes that are generated in these areas. And so Brad, you're right, that that's really what we were trying to capture.
So we've got the raw data, we'll get an answer back for you. But I suspect it may just be one or two businesses that are influencing the industrial area, whereas you wouldn't see that so much on the corridors.
Right, well, that certainly makes sense. And then if you look at the other area where the newest buildings have gone up in that kind of, again, the northwest corner of the city, starting, I would think, this year as things have come online, you should see a pretty significant jump there. You talk about, oh, help us understand what a flex space is?
Sure, so flex space is kind of what it says. It's a space that allows for a variety of different uses or enterprises. So a good example are some of these light industrial areas, again, where you've got just a shell. You're renting essentially maybe 2,000 square feet of light industrial space. And it's flexible because you can do a lot of things in it. So you can be making products, you could be designing products. There's some pretty interesting businesses as it relates to both merging both design and manufacturing of, what is it, is it skis or something's going on over there that was just kind of blew us away? It's from our, yeah, Down River? What are the, I'm sorry, whitewater rafting? Yeah, I mean, stuff like that. And you look at the buildings and you're thinking, well, that's kind of drab. But there's astounding creative pursuits within them and it's.
They're not necessarily, they're not actually oriented toward retail. This is more people making stuff, whether it's natural property or it's a thing.
Correct, they're making stuff. And yeah, probably distributing and selling that in a way that it wouldn't show up at sales tax.
Okay, and then the, well, one other thing there, a couple of things that you suggest, or we will look into refining. And refining, to me, is taking something you have and you make it better.
Right.
Specifically, you talk about the Renewal Wheat Ridge. And how do we refine that?
The refinement for Renewal Wheat Ridge comes to something called core values and also making sure priorities are in sync with all these plans we're putting together here. So the good news about Wheat Ridge is, again, we're being very methodical and deliberate about how the community evolves over time. Renew Wheat Ridge is an entity that can help finance some things that the community wants. So how do we make sure we're relating the two? The core values that we have drafted for Renew Wheat Ridge, I was actually.
I don't know if we've actually drafted them yet, we have some sample language.
Yeah, some sample, but for example, in terms of the URA, being innovative, inclusive, impactful. And, you know, looking at what we're financing and just looking at those sort of three words, and which can mean a lot, actually. Is this something that's gonna be new and different for Wheat Ridge? The inclusive notion, which gets into what we were just talking about in terms of where we're providing opportunities, maybe for not only locally-owned businesses, but also minority-owned, women-owned, other enterprises that could thrive here. And impactful, is the investment impactful? Is it going to be catalytic? And I think Wheat Ridge has done a pretty good job with impactful. If you look at the history of URA here, it's been pretty impactful. But this notion of are we pushing, are we being more innovative? So we're creating something new and different for our community? Are we pushing the boundaries on being inclusive in terms of who's actually getting into business and who's going to benefit and be served by these businesses?
And just one last quick thing here. We've seen a lot of change in the office, the market for office space.
Yes.
Where's it going? Where do you guys, what's happening next? We have several buildings that are dedicated to office space in Wheat Ridge. And like most of Denver, there are a lot of vacancies.
There is, but, and I don't say this to be kind of cute, but thank goodness you're not downtown Denver right now. So.
In more ways than one, yes.
But certainly on office space. I mean, there's just an oversupply of obsolete office space down there. Suburban communities are not being hit as hard with the sort of impacts of remote work that's creating vacancies in office. The advantage of Wheat Ridge and some of the other near suburbs too, is this notion of lifestyle. We're offering lifestyle opportunities so that if someone is office-ing here, we can offer something that's closer to their home, or we can offer something that's close to one of these neighborhood business districts, so being mindful of that. So compared to other submarkets in Denver, you haven't been hit as hard. Secondly, you just don't have as much office. And thirdly, we think you'll be more resilient because it's more of a lifestyle choice if someone is going to have a business here, as opposed to some of the challenges you're seeing in other high-office areas.
Then to conclude here, what happens next? What can we expect?
From us?
Yes.
Well, a report and recommendations and more importantly, immediate implementation. I mean, we're working with Steve, we're working with our project advisory team, which also includes many of these organizations we're talking about tonight.
A timeframe?
Four to six weeks on delivery. So we think this is, this work also will help some of what CityPlan is doing. And again, we're having yet another conversation with the CityPlan consultants tomorrow. So we've been talking with them and integrating some of these ideas in CityPlan. And I don't want to speak for Steve and Patrick, but I would say implementation of some of these ideas can be before the end of the year.
Sure. Sure, a high level of confidence.
One or two. Some, I did some. Thank you.
You start with printing the plan and, you know, you're already ahead.
Well, actually, let me also say, we're being really careful that this thing is sized to the capabilities of Wheat Ridge. I mean, this is a plan for Wheat Ridge. This is not something that is just, you know, that Centennial should be doing, you know, name your, like what. Wheat Ridge is unique, you know, you're 35,000 folks, you have certain capacities. And we're really trying to be mindful of that moving forward. So, yeah, I mean, sure, I think we, there are going to be some things that we could implement because City is already working on some of these things. And some of these ideas are low-hanging fruit. They're not going to cost much money or time, but they could improve things measurably.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver.
Thank you. Mayor, this is great. I would like to say just a few things about being inclusive, not only to what Councilor Snell was talking to, but also just that Wheat Ridge has a pretty vibrant market in first-order goods. And I'm talking about some of the historic farms and the meat markets. And I think a lot of times, because those are first-order good stuff and it's not a huge money generator for the city, they're often overlooked. And if those things go away, and I think there's some low-hanging fruit with several of those businesses as far as small grants for small businesses, because it's things that, you know, I'm talking about some of the smaller grocery stores and things like this, and people who are making handmade things, whatever that be, when I say first-order goods. Of just recognizing, because I too have been involved in almost all of the business organizations and no one's reached, you know, everybody wants those places to be here in Wheat Ridge, but there aren't any, because we're not huge revenue-generating businesses, we're often overlooked for even small grants or things like that. And so just sort of that recognition that those sorts of businesses actually make a difference in quality of living in Wheat Ridge. And I just want to make sure we're not losing that, because I know it's great to have restaurants, but all of the restaurants in Wheat Ridge buy from the six of us who do a lot of the food stuff around the community. And so just kind of remembering that, that there's a backend of that that we don't want to lose in Wheat Ridge, just because we're looking at technology and all these other things that also make a city great. But one of the things that I really think makes Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge, are some of those historical businesses. And I'm thinking of Heine's and just the places we've heard people say, I go to Heine's for local fruit and vegetables every year to do my canning and all these different things. And I just, or Wheat Ridge Poultry, or Edwards Meats, and just some of these places that just, you know, I used to drive out from Denver to, just to go to these places because they didn't exist anywhere else. So I just want to make sure we keep those and make sure those historic businesses aren't getting ignored. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you. So most of my comments and questions have been addressed by my colleagues. But to Amanda's, Councilmember Weaver's, the point, many of those businesses that she's speaking of are on 44th or just off of 44th, with the exception of Five Fridges Farm. And I really appreciated that one of the corridors that was called out for a lot of opportunities for economic development is 44th Avenue. And I think we've recognized that. And, you know, we've done a phenomenal job at activating 38th and bringing businesses. We still have some work to do in that area. But I also have appreciated seeing a higher level of marketing and highlighting businesses along 29th and 44th. And appreciate Local Works kind of taking the block parties to those community corridors that are really our assets that we can walk and bike to. You know, Young's Market is at the top of my street. We, you know, I've gone there all of my life. And so there's just a lot of businesses in the community that would need that support. And I'm really appreciating these conversations that we're having and bringing a diverse set of businesses for everybody's needs. And also recognizing that strong sales tax base and revenue for the city means that we can offer those amenities that community members, whether they've lived here for a long period of time or are moving into this community because they see the opportunities and that it's a great place to raise families, that we can afford those and maintain those into the future for everyone. And I've really appreciated our conversations and your work on this, so thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you very much for your presentation. It looks like we've really got this plan just about close to the finish line, so thank you very much. Councilor's staff is looking to get consensus that the goals of the plan and the general direction is in the direction we want to head. Do we have consensus in that regard? We do, so I want to thank you very much. We look forward to your final plan.
Thank you, thanks for the time tonight, too, we really appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, we will now move to agenda item number three. This is an overview of Roundabouts Effectiveness and Application in Our City.
Thank you, Mayor. This was a council-initiated item. Unfortunately, Mr. Olm is not here this evening, he is on Zoom.
He is joining us though, on Zoom.
Yeah, he's having some, he's having some computer issues, so, but he may speak up. He was the primary sponsor, I think a couple of the other rest of you sponsored this. But it's also timely. We are looking at some future road projects that Roundabouts may be an application. And we have a current project in partnership with the City of Edgewater. So Maria is here to educate us about Roundabouts this evening. Maria?
Great, thank you so much. Yes, as Patrick said, this was originally, I believe, brought up by Councilmember Olm after a trip to Europe where he experienced firsthand, I believe, quite. where he experienced firsthand, I believe, quite a number of driving through roundabouts. And the interesting thing though, is that we're seeing it locally as well. So probably all of you, not only nationally, but locally, we're seeing more and more roundabouts, just more and more different types of traffic calming. As that continues to be an issue that arises in, in neighborhoods. And I know that many of you experienced that as you were out campaigning or just talking to residents in general, about traffic in general. And how that impacts quality of life and how people just enjoy their homes, their businesses. And so this roundabouts, I'm just going to give a very brief overview, but just to let you know that our intent is, as we're developing capital projects, is to look at this roundabouts as an alternate and effective method at potentially incorporating that into our projects. Where that might have not have been done in the past, we're certainly committed to that as staff to where, and incorporate that where it makes sense. And as Patrick mentions, I'll talk a little bit about some specific examples that we're implementing right now. So that, so specifically what is a roundabout? And really, it's just a different way of managing an intersection. So in that, traffic flows counterclockwise. And the great thing there is that it overall improves traffic flow. So if you think about either a four-way stop, a two-way stop condition of four legs coming together, or in a, even in a signal, this roundabout will actually improve all of those conditions in terms of both traffic flow and safety, which I'll get into in a little bit more detail. And really, they do that by reducing the number of conflict points, not only between vehicles, but between pedestrians and bicyclists and the vehicles themselves. And really overall reduces the potential for high speed collisions. The graphic on the left is just kind of a simplified version of what a roundabout looks like. So we have that large center island, which the larger that gets, as you can imagine, the tighter that circle gets. So you're forced out of direction as you move through an intersection. If you're going, you know, from the left side of the screen to the, to the right, or from the north to the south. You know, you're forced with your vehicle to actually make that movement to the right, get into that lane. Instead of, if you think of a typical intersection, just going on a cross pattern, you can move forward through that very quickly. And as that statement says there, signaling roundabouts have been designed for low speed operation. When they're designed well, are really one of the safest treatments available for accurate intersections. Which is why we want to make sure that we're keeping that in our toolbox again for potential implementation. And this is just a graphic that shows, on the left, it shows a typical roundabout. And the, the red dots show where there's the potential for vehicle conflict. So typically, if you're entering the roundabout at one of those red dots, you could potentially meet up with another vehicle. The difference is not only on the right there where that's a typical intersection, imagine if that's signalized there. You've got left turning vehicles, right turning vehicles, vehicles coming across. You're increasing those number of conflict points, but also the severity of those crashes. So imagine at an intersection, somebody blows the red light. Now you have potentially either a broadside, or a head-on, or a right angle crash. Those can often be high injury and/or deadly. Whereas with a roundabout, it's typically more of a side to side, a lot of rear end accidents, which not great, but certainly better than some of those more high injury crashes. Then you can also see with the yellow dots, the pedestrian conflicts are also reduced. And I just talked about that. So those types of crashes are really reduced with roundabouts or nearly eliminated. And there's been quite a bit of data done and analysis. So the NCHRP is a program or through, sponsored nationally, that does a lot of analysis and research on traffic related issues. And there you can see overall crashes, intersections that are converted to roundabouts see a reduction in all crashes by 35%. And a reduction in injury crashes by over 76%, which is amazing. And just some additional advantages beyond the safety aspects that we've talked about is also enhancing traffic flow. So imagine you're at the, some particular intersection, let's say 38th and High Court, which we've heard complaints about. And you're waiting on the side street there on High Court. And it's like, why isn't the light turning? Why isn't the light turning? And so you're, you're being delayed. So, but there might be no traffic at that particular time on 38th. So with a roundabout, you're able to enter at, as soon as you approach the intersection and go on about your way. So there's no idling, there's no reason for you to delay. And so overall, that also reduces pollution and fuel usage because you're continuing as opposed to sitting at the, waiting for a red light. If the signal time isn't great, or there's a lot of traffic in the other direction. And overall, as you can imagine, they save operation and maintenance costs. So we were just talking about budget today and putting in more money for vehicle detection on our signals, doing more to maintain all of our traffic signals. And it's really an ongoing effort. Not only that initial cost, which is right now probably around a million dollars for a signalized intersection to do one, but then those annual electric, electric costs to maintain all the signals, relamp them and all the maintenance costs that goes along with that. So with that, all those virtually disappear. So you probably do have some maintenance, similar to like a roadway, but not much or anything in terms of electrical or operational. There are some challenges. You know, once you get at a certain capacity or a certain volume of traffic, they can exceed what a roundabout can handle. So then you look at probably multi-lane roundabouts, which can be a little bit more challenging and not quite as safety effective as a single lane roundabout. And then also large vehicles, you may have heard this from Denver. Denver put in a number of what we call traffic circles within the last couple of years. Denver Fire has come out pretty strongly about the diameter of those and how those were designed to make sure that they can still effectively get through neighborhoods and get there in a timely manner. But buses, articulated, large trucks, you know, all of those have more of a challenge when they're moving through a roundabout. There's also typically an increased need for right of way at the intersection where the roundabout is actually located. Because imagine that circle and that intersection gets a little bit larger there to make that, those vehicles go out of direction. And then it can increase the delay on the side streets where there's a higher volume street. So if you've got quite a bit of traffic, again, using that 38th and High Court example, typically 38th obviously will have a lot more traffic. So when we start to introduce people from the side street, it could delay all that, the volume on 38th potentially. And very much so visually impaired pedestrians can often have a difficult time. So a lot, they use their ears to a great degree to hear when a car is stopping or to know which direction they're coming from. And so when there's a continuous movement, it's very difficult for them to understand or interpret when a vehicle is actually stopping or just accelerating through an intersection. And so it can be very important to design those so that pedestrians have that ability to really listen for and know, have some other elements that they can rely on if they're navigating through a roundabout. But overall, in any case, you know, if we were to move forward, we would want to do a very thorough traffic study to analyze some of these elements to make sure that the roundabout is the right fit. And just to touch on, typically, roundabouts can be better for bicycle and pedestrian accommodations as well. As that previous slide showed, there's fewer conflict points between vehicles, bikes and pets in a roundabout. But it's also important to educate. So children, especially even adults, you know, how they navigate through this, whether they decide to take the lane or go up on the sidewalk if you're on a bike, you know, it's important to follow the rules. But it's great because as you can imagine, and if I can use my pointer here, especially as you're, for a pedestrian, if you're crossing, let's say from the south to the north, you're coming to that median point, you're only having to look over your shoulder to the left. So that's the only vehicles that you're really concerned about that are either in the, in the, in the circle or coming off this right right here. So you have, instead of multiple, you know, people turning left, people coming across in a typical intersection, you've really just got that one leg to worry about. Then you get to the median, then you're looking to your right to make sure any of those approaching vehicles before you make that next move. So it is, puts more control, I would say, in the pedestrian's hand to really make, gauge and where those gaps in traffic are before they make their next move. And it also just opens things up so that drivers can see and yield to pedestrians when they're present within the roundabout area. And overall, just slower speeds, again, are going to cause people to slow down. And hopefully, if there is, if there is, does happen to be a crash, that that severity is lessened. Traffic circles, so just to differentiate those from what's a traditional roundabout. Denver again has installed quite a number of these, especially just east of Edgewater between like Sloan's Lake area. These were some pictures I took of one that's just north of Sloan's Lake. And like it says, they're, they're really, they didn't really modify the curbs much. So imagine again, a typical intersection, four-way streets. They plop this circle down in the middle of it with some asphalt in the middle and some signs. And, but the good part is, it's, it's relatively low cost, but it forces again, those vehicles to go out of direction as they're traveling through. So the lower picture probably shows it best. So if you're in the car, you can't just, you know, if there is a stop sign here, you can't just blow through. You're going to be forced to the right to get around that because you're probably not going to want to drive over that in your typical car. So it, it really, that safety factor of slowing down traffic is achieved by forcing those cars to move around that traffic circle in the middle. Okay. And then just a couple of examples that we're working on right now. So with, in conjunction with the City of Edgewater, they're taking the lead. We're designing this roundabout currently at 26th and Harlan. So this is right on the border between, basically Wheat Ridge is on the north side of this intersection. Edgewater is on the south. And this would add a true roundabout. The red area in the center is traversable by a large vehicle. So we've done turning templates. The green area would be either landscaped or potentially some area for public art is not intended to be traversable. But if you were in a, let's say a bus or a large vehicle, you could drive up on that red area to drive over through the circle. The, then we have the, what's called splitter islands, the little triangles as you approach. And each of that has a landing spot for pedestrians. Right here, you can just make out the white cross marks in each direction. We have met, myself and the Public Services Director from Edgewater have met with each of the property owners at each corner here. So there is a slight amount of right of way that we need from each of them that will be part of the project to acquire that. But overall, all of them have been very supportive of this project because they see the traffic volumes every day, pretty much of what's traveling down 26th. And so the intent of this is really again, to lower the speeds on 26th Avenue and yet allow for, you know, basically 24/7 enforcement by forcing people to slow down in that location. And so they're very welcoming of this improvement and excited for it. So our intent is to work on this. We're finishing up the design so that we can bid this probably later this year. And we will split the costs of this project with them, with Edgewater taking the lead. And then another one location we're evaluating is at 38th and Parfett. So as you all know, we're currently going through the 38th West study between Young Field and Kipling. It's about a mile and a half long corridor. And we're looking at, this is currently a traffic signal at 38th and Parfett. And eliminating that traffic circle and instead, or traffic signal, and instead putting in a roundabout in that location. You can see that kind of darker center circle there with the conscribed circle around it, which would be that roundabout. Again, we'd have splitter islands coming in on each direction for pedestrians to cross at. And so again, we have, and then sidewalks all around, which is that darker yellow color. So we feel like it's worth it to consider this. There is some right of way takes on each corner, including the park here in the southeast quadrant. But again, I think for overall traffic calming, that was one of the definite comments that came back from our public outreach along the corridor was the need to just calm traffic in general. We would also be looking with this project to install true more traffic circles, so a little bit smaller, at the intersection with Miller Street, which is that private development on the north. That's a little bit, maybe a little ways west of Kipling. And then more on the west end at, what is it? It's Tabor Port. So in the entrance into that newer development there, we'd also put a traffic circle. So trying to space those at relatively even increments along that corridor to again, kind of enhance that, that slowdown feel. So with that, happy to answer any questions or take any comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Dandrea, questions? We'll start with Counselor Weaver.
Thank you. I love this. I think this would be a great solution on 38th. I, I, I just, I just wanted to ask out loud Counselor Hultein and you to comment on, on just bike flow through with things like this. And then my second question is, West Metro is right there. Are they supportive of, I mean, they can get through that, those circles? So maybe we'll, have you answered that and then we'll, I'll throw it to, and then I'll be done. Thank you.
I'll defer to Councilmember Hultein and the.
And I'm really supportive of this. So thank you for bringing.
Yes, we have met with West Metro. There's a access signal just to the, just to the east of Parfett there, which I believe is off the screen. But you know, that emergency signal to get in and out of the station. So those two, those two are not tied together in any way. So when West Metro pulls out, let's say onto 38th, then they've got to use their opticom to signal the, or train, change the signal at Parfett. So it does result in a little bit of delay for them. So they're all, they're very supportive of this, as long as we can make sure and we'll be showing them and have shown them the turning templates for all of the vehicles that they house out of that station.
Mayor Protem Stites.
Well, actually, I was going to ask, you actually asked basically carbon copy my question, but maybe Counselor Hultein can opine a little bit on bike safety in roundabouts.
Just a little bit.
Just a little bit, though.
Mayor, is that okay?
Okay, time is on, go ahead.
No, I will, I will keep, I will keep it short. I will keep it short. And I know Counselor Ohm and I both care about this a lot. And he and I have actually prepped a lot for this, this meeting. I will say, as, as someone who depends on a, not depends, I do drive too, but rides my bike a lot, these are vastly safer for me as a cyclist because I, as has been pointed out, I just, there's fewer directions I have to be looking. I'm also a little bit more visible. Multi-lane roundabouts are a different treatment. And I don't think at this point, we're considering those right now. We're just talking about single lanes. So I think, you know, as a confident cyclist, I just take the lane like a car in these confidently. And if I'm less confident, then I can behave like a pedestrian. So it gives that option. There is a hybrid that Edgewater has done as part of their safe routes to school infrastructure at 24th and Pierce. And I would encourage people to take a look at that. And, and I will raise my hand and give some comments in a second. But in general, these are, these are safer for bicyclists. But the devil's in the details on these and using best practices. And I would strongly encourage NACTO guides for this. But I will say they're, they're generally safer. The one caution is if I am a kid and I'm less confident, it's just a, it's a traffic pattern that kids need to be, you know, educated on, just like any other type of travel on a bike. Like they have to learn how to go through a four-way intersection as well. So it's, you know, I just encourage parents in roundabouts to teach kids how to use them correctly, just like a four-way intersection. So very improved safety.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, can I, sorry, can I finish what I was, just, so I, for me, I, a few years ago probably wouldn't have been for this, but driving through Golden quite a bit, taking my kids to camp and different things like that, these really do speed up your, your travel time. Your, your speed maybe slowed down, but your travel time really does speed up because you're not stopping for lights that nobody's at or anything like that. So I'm actually, where we, where you have these marked off, I think this is a, a great way to go. And I've seen some public pushback just on social media and stuff about specifically this one at Parfett just because of the fire station in Prospect Valley. But, you know, knowing that they are safer, considering that, you know, there will be education going and we are putting in sidewalks and different things like that down 38th. I, I think this will be a much better way for those kids to be able to get to and from school. And provided West Metro is okay with driving the, their big trucks through there, I think that this is going to look out great. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Snell. Thank you, Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for this. This is very exciting. I'm very much in support of this and I, I'm guessing Councilmember Hulteen will mention this as well, but the, the roundabouts in Edgewater are perfect for cyclists who may want to learn how to ride through a roundabout. They have, they have it painted so that you actually are riding off the street, onto the sidewalk for part of it when you go into a turn. So you have the option, as we've talked about, to take the lane or to get out, get off and actually have an even lower stress situation through that. But I, I appreciate these very much. I ride through there a lot, both on a regular bike and on a bike full of coffee. It's not very fast. It's not fast because it's not electric, so it's just Jenny-powered. So I'm in favor of this and I do think, there is a learning curve with a lot of this, but I do feel like the, approaching it as a driver, also you're, you're, in your brain, you're sort of like, whoa, this is something new, I better slow down so that I can actually do the right thing and not drive over the middle of it. But all of that to say, very much in favor of this and appreciate the, the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And the, the advantages of, of traffic, of roundabouts, both in terms of safety and traveling, going from here to there are, I think they're pretty clear. And I'm hoping that the, this sort of education process that is spelled out in here, when people learn that you're always looking to the left for the traffic oncoming, will maybe bleed over to stop signs because every four, four-way stop sign I go to, they look this way and say, no, you go ahead. No, it's the, it's the driver on the left, if you get there at the same time, the driver on the left has, he has the advantage. And people just can't get that. And it, it kind of drives me crazy because I go through the four-way stop sign every day and they just don't get it. It's either that or the, a smaller percentage, but a number of people just, it's like they just, they're not going to stop. They just pull up there and we've seen some bad accidents here. Four-way stop signs are not ideal, but in situations there are required. And I can think of a few intersections where it, a roundabout just wouldn't work, but I can think of others where it would. So I think this is heading down the correct path for the city in terms of traffic management. And maybe we can think about some way to alleviate the 20-minute delays on Kipling at rush hour.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hulteen.
My first. Thank you. Yeah, I am just beyond excited that we are evaluating this and considering it in the city. And I just want to make mention that literally every city around us is utilizing them, not just as spot solutions, but actually systemically, Edgewater I think is really leading. And they identified in their city that they wanted to slow traffic and they are doing just a really systemic job of that. And they're doing very clever things like forcing liquid and Wheat Ridge to join them on their corridors. So if you drive on 20th, which is fairly busy street between Sheridan and Wattsworth, there's roundabouts there. A couple of things, so I, I think, one of the things I really love is when you have something that can be an elegant solution to a lot of problems, and the roundabout is exactly that. It's not without things that have been identified, but we've heard from our community that, you know, slowing cars down in neighborhoods is incredibly, and on corridors is incredibly important. You know, they care about sustainability, we care about, you know, being able to reliably get where you need to go. And it has been mentioned, you actually have a more reliable commute in your car because you're not having to like, try and get through the, the intersection timing, you know, like for me getting out of my neighborhood at 44th and Wattsworth, it depends on how many times I have to sit through that cycle. Whereas in a roundabout, you don't. So it's, anyway, so it's, it's a really elegant, efficient thing. A couple specifics that I just want to call out. So the, the design at 38th and Parfett, one is I realize that we are proposing significant infrastructure investments on the east-west corridor. Parfett does not have sidewalks alongside Louise Turner Park. And for, for roundabouts to work, you really do have to have effective pedestrian crossings at all four points. And, and we should have pedestrian infrastructure that connects those. So I don't know if that's being evaluated on those north-south streets to ensure that that that's actually connecting. The second thing that's been called out by Councilmember Snell, the, the roundabouts that are used around Jefferson and Lumberg in, in Edgewater, were part of a Safe Routes to School program and they are designed for kids first. And I would really encourage the city to go take a look at 24th and Pierce is the one in particular, but they use truncated, they use truncated dome elevated crosswalks. And so it's ensuring that the cars are actually going through those roundabouts in a safe manner. So I think anywhere we're looking at these, where we are looking at direct access to parks or we're within quarter, half mile of schools, we should be looking at modified design that really emphasizes that safe crossing for our kids so that they're able to get to schools and parks safely. So it's those truncated crossings. But 24th and Pierce to me is a gold standard for how to do that. And then other locations, we, we have, we have some weird stoplights in weird places in our city. And I can guess at the history of them, but I don't know for certain. But I think this would be, you know, Pierce is a really great candidate and in particular I want to call out 41st and 35th. And Pierce are two locations where I think roundabouts could really serve a good purpose. We've got the right traffic profile and the right need. And, and if we're going to substitute the controlled crossing here, I really do support the traffic circles on the other intervals as part of like, the traffic control there. So my, my concluding is that these are tremendously safer. I ride 35th Avenue from here to get to downtown through Denver and I feel so much safer and confident because I know cars aren't going to just blow through those intersections, which is like my biggest fear when I'm riding. So I think we're going to improve safety for everybody, but I, I enjoy looking at this intersection, but what I'd really like for us to be thinking about, and we've heard again and again in these chambers over the last couple of months, that like our corridors are really where we need to be giving attention. So we're not quite prime time for two lanes, but where on our corridors can this, can this treatment actually like improve that access and safety? And I would just really look to Edgewater because they, they're fewer corridors, but they're a smaller city and they've really gone a, a long way in, in those investments. So Counsel, I don't know if Councilmember Om is able to join us or not, but yeah, so he, he and I are just in lockstep on this. We just think that this is a significant step forward and it's an elegant solution for the environment and everyone who travels in our city. So yay, roundabouts. We'll have to have t-shirts, roundabout, roundabout t-shirts when the first one opens.
We have enough, we have enough t-shirts. Director DeAndrea, thank you for that presentation. Great, great topic, lot of energy, you know, I, I was watching the Olympics and, you know, I kind of remember as a boy going around the Eiffel Tower as a, as a roundabout sort of, a lot, lot of them in Europe, great, great artwork in the middles. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I am showing that Councilman Om would like to speak.
Okay. Well, Councilman Om, if you can hear us, we, we'll try to hear you.
Thank you. I assume I'm, I'm not on camera.
But we hear you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you so much for everybody. Thank you, fellow council members. And Maria, this is such a, I'm super excited about the roundabout. I echo everything that everybody else has said. And, and I'm really hoping that this, you know, there's so many times within the past weeks where I've had people blow through, you know, stoplights at Allison and 38th. And I, I feel really strongly that having that roundabout will, will be a great safety improvement for our city. And, you know, definitely one of the things that, you know, and how much time we all spend at the, sitting at the stoplights and just, you know, just, you know, spilling out the, the carbon monoxide, so this would be great for the environment. And I'm supportive of, of everything that everybody has said as far as any concern. I'm, I'm just really excited that our city is getting, you know, technically one and a half roundabouts. And so I'm, I'm very excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Om, and thank you for being able to join us tonight. So we don't have any more discussion on this item. Thank you again, Director. And we will now go to item number four, which is staff reports, and I'll go to Mr. Goff.
Nothing else from this staff.
Okay, no, no staffers tonight. We'll go to elected officials' reports. Who wants to start it off tonight? Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank all of the caregivers, volunteers and consultants that helped with the Lutheran Hospital move from the old campus to the new campus. I was honored to be a part of that momentous occasion in Lutheran's almost 120-year history of serving this community. And it just renewed my love for living in this community because at the beginning, you know, we struggled a little bit with, with some volunteers. And I called in some reinforcements and Mayor Starker and former Councilmember Zach Urban, Community Resident Renee Schreiner, and then Lutheran Foundation member Christine Jensen all came to the call of action in a very quick manner. And so I just appreciated them filling in some holes that we needed to fill. And the process all went very smoothly and we finished fairly quickly without any real hiccups. And it was eerily quiet in the old building and really emotional, you know? It's a hospital that, you know, saved my life with an emergency appendectomy when I was nine and both of my children were born there. We've had several emergency visits among all of my family. And I was talking with my, with my parents the other day and realized that Lutheran has cared for five generations of my family. And so just a wonderful steward in our community, a pillar, and, and really appreciated that day and being a part of it. And the new hospital was abuzz today. So, you know, just moving and grooving and, and keeping that care open for the community. So appreciate that. And also Carnation Festival is this weekend, so an occasion to celebrate the incorporation of Wheat Ridge. And coming up quickly, oh my goodness. But thank you.
All right. Thank you. Additional elected officials' matters. Be shy, Counselor Snell.
Also, tomorrow night is National Night Out here at Hayward Park, right here. So hopefully everyone can come. I hear there's a rumor there might be hot dogs, so. But that's always a, a good evening, a good time. So hope to see everyone there and very excited for the Carnation Festival, especially the parade. It's one of the best things in our city. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would just like to direct people's attention to Colorado Public Radio's website. There is a fantastic article about carnations and the important role that Wheat Ridge played in making Colorado the carnation capital of the entire known universe. Yes, just, so, so it's CPR.org/carnation, you'll find it. We are right in the, the thick of the vacation season and I'm happy to report, I'm enjoying some vacation time. And I just would like to remind people, let's keep Wheat Ridge beautiful, please don't litter.
Thank you. Additional elected officials' reports. Oh, Counselor Hulteen.
Yeah.
I'm glad to see your hand up.
Yeah, so yeah, I forgot who I was for a minute there. Yeah, go to Happiness Gardens, it's really beautiful right now. But I wanted to really just call out the Local Works party, block party materials. We, this weekend, checked out a whole bunch of stuff for a large community party and it was easy and made all the difference in 102-degree heat to have 10x10 tents. And the little kids enjoyed having the little lawn games and it just made it so easy and it's just such a great amenity. So I just want to remind people that Local Works has block party materials you can check out and it's just easy peasy and it makes having a lot of people over to celebrate good things easy. And we want to do more of that in our community. So yay, Local Works and yay, having neighbors over. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Counselor Stites.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Couple of weeks ago, we went to the Makerspace and helped out with the community mural and that was a lot of, lot of fun, a great way to bring the community together with that. So thank you to Local Works again and could agree to Makerspace on that. Also, Local Works this past week announced their winners for the Shop Wattsworth campaign they were doing. So thank you to all the businesses and all the people who supported the businesses on Wattsworth right now. It's obviously a pretty trying time, so if you can get out there, support them. And I also want to say happy birthday to my daughter Riley, who's turning 10 tomorrow morning. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further elected officials' matters? All right, thank you all. I want to thank Leah for calling me early on Saturday morning and inviting me to come over and, and be part of the Lutheran exit strategy, if you will. It was, it was really, it was really delightful to be there and I appreciate that we didn't have any, any chaos under, under, under my watch anyway. And it was, it was really a great event and I think I really want to, you know, sort of congratulate Intermountain and Lutheran Hospital for, for building a great facility, for having a great opening and for, for really what they've been in our community. And, and more than that, sort of looking forward to the future with their, with the campus that's there and a lot of great things that are going on. So we will be back here a week from tonight with a regular meeting, so I hope everyone will, will plan to join us then. And if there's no more business to become before us, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.